...are coming to the regular city council meeting on August fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. Please rise. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Lynn is on vacation and Mary is on her honeymoon.
I'll move to excuse Mary.
I'll make the motion that we excuse Mary.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's okay. I guess I'll speak louder next time.
Yeah, yes. Approval of the minutes, July twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. Does anybody have anything?
I have one on page seven. It's about five, two inches down. It says, Councilmember Rizzi stated he was not, or he will not discuss that. Councilman Kibble stated there, your taxes went up twenty-nine dollars and his was thirty-one, it should say, and Kibble's was thirty-one. It says his was thirty. So, that's the only correction I had. Thanks. Kibble's was thirty-one.
I move the minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the bills?
John?
Sure.
I am keeping my eye on the expenditure report and I just wanted to bring to the attention of the administration that as of July thirty-first, nine point seven-nine percent of their budget has been used. If they stay on that track, they will be over budget in twelve months. That puts them at about one hundred and twenty percent over. So, I'm gonna stay on my mantra of watching expenditures that are going out in the city and when I see a red flag, I'm gonna, I'm gonna raise it. So, thank you.
What department was that?
That was administration. They're at nine point seven-nine and when you take that multiplied by twelve, I think you get to about one seventeen, one eighteen. There'll be twelve months of their budget, so they would be over budget.
John?
Mike?
Hey, Mike. Car rental reimbursement?
One of our newer drivers had a close encounter with a private vehicle and there was a collision. And we've done remediation with our driver on that, treating that as we would any private citizen trying to make that person whole for damages. They were stopped at a light. Our driver made it too, too quick of a left turn. So, that's what that's from.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Anyone else?
I move the bills.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the agenda? Think there's anything else?
I'll move it.
I'll support.
Discussion?
Aye.
At our last meeting, we were going to delay an appointment to the planning commission, which I didn't understand why, but for whatever reason. This was a very qualified individual. She would have done extremely well on the planning commission. I believe that the votes, I don't know, because I don't talk about my vote ahead of time, but I would just assume that the votes would have been there at the last meeting to put her on the planning commission. I did not see her here tonight, I mean, her application here tonight, because I thought, because I wanted to vote for her. What's the story in that? Does anybody know?
Just waiting for a full board. Mary's out.
Okay. I guess I don't understand. Why do you need that? You have the votes.
I feel as all also to the timing of announcements in the last week or so and not having a full board, not having our city manager here tonight. It was probably a good idea not to.
Well, usually, if I may, John.
It's my appointment.
Right. No, no, I'm just, if I may respond, if that's okay?
Yep.
Thank you. No, usually appointments aren't controversial and certainly I, uh...
You guys are making it controversial.
No, 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 I'm not at all. I was actually gonna say that I, I think that we need qualified people and I would fully support Ms. Kapkowski on the board, planning commission. So, you know, if we were to vote on it tonight, I want to amend the, if we would amend the agenda, I'd be willing to make that appointment tonight. But certainly, I don't mind waiting. That's up to you, John, certainly.
Yeah, I'll wait, but I would have voted for her also, so. Strange.
Do we have a motion on the...
We have a motion.
Motion on the agenda.
Yeah, with second and discussion.
Call for the vote.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All but comment. Start. State your name and address and...
Alyssa Cruze, three-three-zero South Lawn. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time today. I am here before you on behalf of a concerned coalition of South Lion residents. For years, we have maintained a certain amount of cohesiveness between city government and city residents. Though we've not always seen eye to eye, as in any kind of government debate, it's not been due to bad blood or vindictiveness, but rather tends to open up a constructive dialogue regarding the best way to move the city we call home forward. Through experience, accessibility, transparency, and general level headedness has come to be an expectation, traits which many of you thankfully still demonstrate. However, over the last two years, our trust in our local government has begun to waver. Our patience has worn thin, our stability is being threatened, constructive debate has become destructive debate. Otherwise, productive and efficient meetings have become long drawn out and anarchic proceedings. Experienced incumbent council members have decided that proceedings are no longer worth their time and energy and we can't say that we blame them. Literally, nobody wants to be the mayor of this small Michigan town, the headlines say. To top it all off, we've recently learned that the South Lion Water Department, Wastewater Department, and Department of Public Works Superintendent Bob Martin has turned in his letter of resignation. Even wearing all of these different hats, Bob has had a successful and much appreciated tenure of over thirty-eight years with the city and we are extremely grateful for his service to our community. Bob leaving has stirred up disappointment and angst amongst residents, colleagues, and employees. In a surely underappreciated role, he's been one of the finest, if not the finest, public servants that we have seen in this city. Having headed up three departments and of course remembering the countless dollars he has saved us, he deserves nothing less than our utmost respect. Additionally, he has been a staple in South Lion, aside from his day job, thanks to his selfless volunteerism and sense of community, and we certainly look forward to that continuing. That being said, it is a career that is ending too soon, no doubt in part due to the juvenile behavior of members of this council. This is what you get when sophomoric conduct replaces general order. You get the government you ask for and we've decided that is time to speak up. Our support of our great city, our hometown, is unwavering. However, we refuse to stand by and watch it be taken over by antagonist rhetoric that seeks to accomplish nothing but riling up the council and general populace. You all ran for the seat because you love this city and want to do what is best for it. This is why today, in the best interest of this city of South Lion, we respectfully request, nay, we demand, that you, Councilwoman Kurtzweal, submit your letter of resignation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for participating. Thank you.
Marilyn Smith, one-twenty East Lake Street. And I think we all need to stand up right now and give Bob Martin a huge round of applause for what he's done. He's gonna be missed more than any of you know right now and I hope two of you up there are real proud of what you've done.
I have some good news.
Just kidding. Get up here. You've got the name. You've got the name. We had some really great help with the arts and cars thing at the, Arts and Cars Show at the, at the cruise-in and stuff that we were part of and stuff. And Linda, you wanna do the honors for the officer that helped?
I will, I will.
Can you explain?
I sure will. As we were packing out the show, we had, as most of you, we were all there. It was so marvelous. Senior artist who was taking time to pack up, so it was dark and they couldn't see. So, there was a police officer who was keeping an eyeball on us and I asked if he would please shine the light on us. So, he did. He gave us the color wheel as well. And then actually, when we...
He stayed.
He did. He stayed for the whole. It was a long process. It was, the artist, as we all are, was very meticulous about how everything needed to go in the box. So, he stayed with us and he actually got out of the car and helped us take down the tent. So, we want to thank Chief Collins for his wonderful people and in particular Detective Mike Witrock.
And this is for him, Mrs. Zapp.
Oh, how nice. Yeah, nice.
Very nice.
If you could give that, make sure he gets that.
Very nice. I'll do that. Thank you.
We really appreciate it. I also had the opportunity to go to the police station. Because I didn't get his badge or his name, I got to do a lineup, a police lineup. That's the guy. So, that's, that was fun.
Yeah, that was. And thank Linda Robinson for doing all that and also we want to thank Doug Cook and Debbie Cook and Pete Eichenberger and Bob Donahue and everybody that helped on the cruise and it was amazing. And we love doing arts and cars and we're gonna do it next year, too.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Pelchat, two-five-five Wellington. I'd like to start this evening by thanking Mike Kramer, Harvey Weddell, John Galias, and of course, Bob Martin for your time and commitment to this city. It's easy to, to say you want to get involved and do stuff and it's really a job that, there's no time clock. You are always on the job. And Bob, in a very selfish way, I'm definitely gonna miss you here, buddy. So, best of luck. I couldn't be happier for you. I would also like to thank Rich Perry, Steve Kaukinen, and Amber King. It has been an absolute joy to work with you all on the city's cable commission. This afternoon, I submitted my letter of resignation to the cable commission and to the city manager, so I could come before city council this evening and announce my intent to run for mayor of the city of South Lion in the upcoming November in this election. Thank you very much.
Well, I wasn't planning on doing this, but Judy Keeling, six-two, one-eight-o Arlington Circle. And I want to thank Maggie and Joe for all the hard work you do do in investigating that you do before every meeting. And I just want to thank you for being a part of our city.
Thank you.
Hi. Dean Whitcomb, two-five, eight-eight-five McCroy Lane. I just, I wasn't gonna talk tonight either, but I caught the wave, I guess, and I wanted to thank Bob. I've known Bob for many years now and it's always been five minutes at a time, ten minutes at a time with my activities with the Junior League and other, other youth organizations in town. And never have I met a guy that never not returned a phone call, always did exactly what he was gonna do, when he was gonna do it. And not only did it, but always asked, what else can I do? What else can I do? And your best. Thanks.
Can you hear me okay? I've been told I always speak really quietly. I'm here tonight to announce my intention to run for mayor of South Lion as a write-in candidate. Thanks.
Your name, please?
Kennesaw Borkowski.
What's that?
Charles McHale.
Oh, is he? Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Thanks for announcing your candidacy tonight and who you are, both of you. Bob, I'd like you to say a few words under this bittersweet time.
Hi, everybody.
Introduce yourself.
Bob Martin, six-nine-five Northcrest Lane. Bob Martin, twenty-three-five-hundred Dixborough. Bob Martin, three-seventy-six Dorothy Street. Those are all working places and living, although I sometimes get them mixed up where I'm at at any given time. I come tonight just to say thank you to a chance that I was given years ago. On March twenty-third, nineteen seventy-nine, I walked into City Hall, which was located in Lloyd's office, in fact, where he is on Ten Mile. And I had just moved to the city because I was working for the Department of Natural Resources at Proud Lake State Park. And, uh... And my mom and dad were with me. And I walked into City Hall and I, I bumped into a young lady there, in fact, two. Lady by the name of Gail Smolars and the other lady was Norma Wallace. And I said, hey, do you guys have a sewage treatment plant here? Now, how many people walk in and ask if they got a sewage treatment plant? That's an odd... And Norma turned to me and said, where are we taking those applications? And at that moment, she said, why don't you just go out to the plant and talk to the superintendent? Well, that was thirty-eight and a half years ago and it's been a hell of a ride. I like to, I love music and I speak in metaphors of music all the time and Jackson Brown does a song called "This Is My Opening Farewell" and that's what this is to the city, my opening farewell. For the last thirty-eight and a half years, I have been blessed to work for this community. I've worked under three terrific, terrific city managers in Rod Cook, David Murphy, and now Lynn Ladner. I've worked with three fire chiefs in Chuck Beers, Craig Caska, and Mike Kennedy. And I've also worked under two or with two police chiefs and that was Gerald Smith, who we recently lost, and Lloyd Collins, who I truthfully call my friend. And I'm really lucky for that. And the numerous people around us, numerous council members and that. But what I really like to reflect on for just a second is my fellow employees that I've had over the years. I've had some incredible, incredible employees that I became extremely close friends with and with that said, the crew that's at City Hall right now and Phyllis and Judy and Joan and Tara and Lisa, please don't let me forget anyone. Lori, thank you. Thank you, thank you for letting me not forget Lori. Because every day when I walk in there, it's a ray of sunshine, a moment of caring and love and... Not a lot of people can say that about their job. I've been able to say that. I've been very, very blessed in working with a very, very special person that's made me stronger over the years and that is Susan Martin at the back of the room. Please. She makes me stronger, she makes me better, outstanding. Okay, let's just leave it at that. My actual employees at both plants are incredible. The DPW, just every one of the guys over there, just they care so deeply about what we do and I replaced a really, really fine gentleman by the name of Steve Renwick, who at this moment is laying in the hospital in very, very poor health. And all I can say is, Steve, we send our prayers your way because we love you dearly for what you did for this city for thirty-eight years, too. Okay? At the water department, it's just been a ride. I was hired by a gentleman by the name of Lyndon Beebe and this guy was unbelievable. It was always understood when you worked for Lyndon, you just didn't consider about taking a test, but you considered taking every test every time and you pushed yourself to become better. And that's one reason why I've been superintendent for the last almost eighteen years since Lyndon left. The workers out there, Ron Beeson at the back of the room, an incredible worker who's the next generation for the city that we're gonna hand this off to. A gentleman that is known throughout the city by a man who had an extremely long beard. His name is John Haas. If you knew John, it's like knowing Santa Claus. That's the love that man had for this city. And then, and then this guy by the name of Dave Miller. Dave Miller and I became friends when I was in college, back in the UP. He was in the military at Kinsler Air Force Base and a class I had, we would go out to the air force base to practice sewage treatment. Isn't that a weird class? We would go out to the, and I bumped into this guy and, you know, you get to, hey, how you doing? And the day when I walked to the wastewater treatment plant out, which is at where the DPW yard is now, that's who I bumped into was Dave Miller and we looked at each other and from that day on, in fact, before then, we have been brothers. And he is the finest wastewater water person I have ever met. He put thirty-eight years of pride and work into this city and that's one reason why the water department and the wastewater department is what it is today. It's a strong brotherhood with all of us and all I can say, I've been extremely blessed. About eighty-eight years ago, a baseball player stood at Yankee Stadium. His name was Lou Gehrig and he announced to the crowd that he was the luckiest guy in the world. No, I'm the luckiest guy for getting to serve the city of South Lion. So, all I can say is to every resident, oh, wait a second, my wife and children. If you know Emily and Shelby, in fact, Emily called me at seven-thirty this morning. She's in northern Canada and she called me at quarter after seven and she stuck her head out of, she's camping in northern Canada and she's got out of the tent to use a tree. Let's leave it at that. And a giant bear was right there and she called me and said, Dad, you wouldn't believe what's out here. And I thought it was so cool. And my children have been so proud of the fact of the position I've held with this city. I grew up in Detroit, but my children grew up in South Lion and this is their city, is South Lion. My wife has supported me to the point that every time we go on vacation, whether it be in Europe, Hawaii, or Canada, I take her through sewage treatment plants. And she never complains.
Yes, she does.
So, with that said, thank you for an incredible thirty-eight years to the citizens and residents of this city. I love you all. I'm not gonna be too far away. Just don't stop by my house now and ask if I got a water key on a Sunday afternoon. Although if you do, I'm sure I'll find one and I'll help you, all right? So, thank you all and I love this city and I love you all. Thank you very much. Bob, I just wanted to thank you for your years of service. Ryan Lehrer, seventeen, Grand Court. And I just wanted to let everybody know that there is a retirement party for Bob in the conference room after city council tonight. So, if you guys want to come and get cake and say goodbye to Bob, feel free to come in and say thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Know how I feel.
I know.
Hold business. Planning Commission resignation, Michelle Berry. I move we accept the resignation with thanks for her service. A second?
Support.
Go ahead. Whoever wants that.
Thank you for your service. We need more people.
That does leave three seats open, too.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, one thing is, you find out through the years, you'll find out, you know, kinda, that there's just a handful of people's names in the drawer and it usually is the same people most of the time because most people don't want to do any of this. It takes a unique person to want to do some of this and especially planning commission and all that, that's just time out of your day, you know, and there's people, Erin Kapkowski is qualified, she and me have kind of the same education and... Interesting. So, anybody that's interested in getting involved, please come to the city hall, go on the website, see what's available, put your application in. Definitely use you. So, thank you. Again, thank you for Michelle Berry's service.
John? If I may, if I may add, I don't know if it was mentioned, but the reason why she's resigning is because she's announced...
Oh, absolutely.
...candidacy as a write-in candidate. So, I just wanted to make that clear, that it's a noble reason why she's resigning, not because she wants to, but because...
Has to.
Yeah, for the rule, she has to, so. And as well, I'd like to thank her for her service and good luck on her mayoral campaign. Thank you.
Consider request from Parks and Recreation for the purchase and installation of the new playground equipment.
The only question I had was, I was wondering if this had been bid out?
What was your question? I'm sorry.
I was wondering if this equipment had been bid out?
This was through a company Bob had given us several people that the city deals with. Every company was pretty much about the same price.
But it's not like with the playground equipment, it's not like three different companies carry the same piece of equipment?
Right.
So, it is for these particular pieces of equipment that...
Yeah, they're all... Yeah, they're all from the same company, so I'm sure that helps. We, I actually went through with my five-year-old son and went to four or five different parks. We researched with two or three different companies, and that actually came out. And I am part of the South Lyon Moms Club, and I polled them as well. And this all came about from going and testing equipment with my son, and as a parent, trying it out, and then looking at the prices, and then polling other moms what they thought their kids would want. So this has been a couple months, I would say, at least, at least, right? It's been a while, a lot of research. Like, the pricing was pretty similar through every company, but this company did offer everything, and we already have a, the city already has a relationship with the company.
Just procedurally, would the Parks and Rec then make their recommendations to the city, and then the city would handle the bidding process if one was needed?
Probably, yeah. We have never handled a bidding process.
Okay, all right, so basically, right, you'd make, it's more like, we did the research, this is the recommendations we have for the playground equipment. We are recommending that we present it to the city, and that the city, if a bidding process is required, the city can go ahead and get the bidding process.
Right, I mean, the equipment that we selected may not be available through each, like, one of almost like little types, which clearly, not trying to sound bad, but they don't last. So we went through, which we, again, what Bob had already said the city works with. So I don't know, a lot of the companies don't offer the same things, though.
So procedurally, then, would they just turn it over to Lynn? Well, no, no, for the bidding process.
Yeah.
Because I don't think they can bid directly.
No, that was one of the issues I wanted to bring up, is that it seems like every other month, we're dealing with section 2-224 of the ordinance. And we did have discussion about having this ordinance amended, so that it is more consumer useful to department heads and individuals. Tim, have you started that? Have you looked with Lynn? I mean, it seems like every other month, we're coming up against this bid.
Lynn and I have exchanged some basic information, but I've not confirmed with her that she wants me to draft anything on this.
Because, and here's my next question, is that this says approval for purchases or contracts over 2,000, but they're not, we're not purchasing it with city funds. It says that they would like to secure city council approval of this plan, along with authorization to release the funding from the Lions Club. So I don't, I don't know if the ordinance would apply, because they're not seeking to use taxpayer dollars. They're coming from a private nonprofit organization, the Lions Club, that had the money here in trust.
I, I would suggest that we need more information about the source of the money, what, where it's coming out of, if it's not coming out of a particular earmarked fund, whether, where it's coming out of the budget, what the bidding process is going to be, or whether we're going to use the quote provided by the Parks and Rec Commission. I didn't, I haven't talked to Lynn about any of this.
We do need to find out if the balance of that, what's left in the Lions Fund is appropriate to cover the cost of this. It was like 30K, I think, when they initially...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five? Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So there's money there to pay it. And if that's what they're asking, then really, the only thing you would need would be a resolution from council to make a dispersment out of that fund. I don't know if the people who deposited the fund, what their restrictions were for the use of the funds, but if their use is consistent with why the funds were deposited, then I would think you would need just a resolution, and maybe the bidding ordinance doesn't apply. It's private funds.
I don't know anything about the Lions Fund.
We could ask Ted.
Yeah, my only concern is the prices you receive are directly out of the catalog, so there wasn't a situation where you're actually asking the vendor to make a...
From what we understood from Lynn, and obviously she's not here tonight, that that money was allocated towards buying new playground equipment or like upkeep or anything, but it was specifically set aside for this. So she, she informed us that we just had to come to get the release, basically.
The point being, though, that the prices in the catalog, we may end up getting a much better deal if they quote the entire package, that's all.
Right.
Bob, does your department handle the upkeep of the park?
It does.
Does that include equipment purchases?
Yes.
Okay.
But I, I have talked to Diane Biegel, and I would never make that purchase without approval from the Parks and Rec Department.
Right, so they can make the recommendation, and then you, if, depending on where the money's coming from, we could allocate it either from the Lions Club or from...
That is correct.
Okay, through your department?
Yep.
Okay.
DPW, Mary Ann takes care of that. She places the order.
Okay.
Comment. So I wanted to say that, first of all, thank you for your due diligence. I remember I was, you've been working on this for about a year, and give or take, correct? And fully trust the recommendation of the Parks and Rec, and I think it's great. We need to get this in as soon as possible. So my question is, what was your timetable for trying to get it in? We want to try and get in before it gets too cold, before fall, I imagine.
I mean, as soon as possible, we would like, but you know, late summer, early fall, we'd like it in, so it can still get some use this year.
Okay, because I think there's some questions that we need to understand about with, when it comes to the competitive bids, how this applies, especially if it's coming from private funds, which I'm sure Tim can facilitate those questions with Lynn and get back to you, but I do want to see this move as forward as quick as possible. And I trust, absolutely trust your judgment, so thank you for bringing this before us.
If you have Lynn's off for a couple of days for vacation, it'd probably be good to get back to her as soon as you can, Wednesday, Thursday.
How about, why don't we make a, just an approval contingent on the funding and, you know, the managers, if she sees any red flags out of the approval process?
I don't have a problem with that.
Does anyone else have any heartburn about that?
So authorize up to $6,900 and then depending on the bidding process. Well, I, I don't want to end up giving a tell to whoever the vendor is, and you know...
That is just the cost. We did not have installation, and it does include actually taking down some equipment, so...
That would be a forced account.
Obviously, so I know, because we did not get with Bob, that it is just, you know, before, pre-tax or whatever, you know, so...
Do you think you could have it, all those figures, and maybe by the next meeting, would you be okay with that, unless approved? And that give enough time?
Well, I guess that's up...
Go over to Kentucky.
Yeah. We, I think they would need to know the exact equipment and the tearing down of the broken equipment.
Yeah, we would need to know, yeah, the cost, the installation, and the tear down.
So if you guys approve it, then we do pass it out to Bob, the department.
Well, I'd make the move, motion that we approve the suggested equipment from Parks and Rec Commission. What was the name of that company? That was...
Sorry, I don't have a letter in front of me. I think it's Burke Playground.
Does make it more difficult.
Yeah, Burke Playground Equipment.
Where are you seeing that?
Look at, for the prices, look at...
Oh, yes, okay, right, just before that, okay. The Burke Playground Equipment suggested the one stand-up digger, three kid force spinners, one Orbatron, and one Comet. The bidding process won't have to have any of the associated costs for the dismantling of the other stuff. That would be in-house, so. As long as the city manager doesn't see any red flags as a product of this, this should be funded through the Lions Club donation.
I would also like to add, well, I'll second, but I'd like to say, I also like to add, in the note, it says that you're also seeking the city council to approve of this plan, along with authorization to release the funding from the Lions Club donation. So if you're looking for that, I think that should be in the motion as well, so I would like to add that.
amend the motion.
When I said from the Lions Club donation, I thought that that kind of covered it.
No, but the city council to authorize it, to release it, that's what we're looking for.
The authorization.
If we approve the motion, then we're authorizing it.
Schematics, but it should be what they're requesting.
Are you, can I call it?
Yeah, well, I'm going on with the slight adjustments.
It's in the motion.
On favor.
What is it that you suggest that we need?
Yeah, I should say the language that's in what's before us, authorizing council to release the funding from the Lions Club donation, because right now it's in the city's pocket, so to have them actually, the city release the funding.
That's exactly what I said. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get that? Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Parks and Recs, for modernizing our parks. This is sorely needed.
I started in Parks and Rec, and we had equipment that the tube mill was generous enough to donate. There was an awful lot of things that had bars and things out there. We were very grateful to have it, but it was nice, the kit really got a kick out of something that had color in it, and that one, we got new stuff.
Consider the purchase of One Life Pack 1,000 Automated External Defibrillator, AED, and Battery.
That would be me. This is the replacement of a Life Pack 500, the one remaining of our automatic external defibrillator units that is now out of warranty and no longer or barely serviceable by the company. Our several-year plan, as approved in the budget already, was to replace all the 500s with the 1,000s. We want to stay with Physio Control, because both the fire department and Huron Valley ambulance use Physio Control equipment. That makes our pads and our units interchangeable with their pads and their units. It also allows us to get replacement pads at no cost when we use them from the Huron Valley ambulance crew that arrives on the scene, so that's a terrific cost saving for us. The total amount for the Life Pack 1,000 and an extra battery is $2,656.78, and that's well below the $5,000 that would require competitive bidding. However, we did go out and check the prices on a couple of other units, even though they would not have served the city's best interest, just to make sure that the price on this unit was not out of line, and it is not. So the police department is requesting approval of the purchase from Physio Control.
John?
One?
I was, just wanted to ask, the 500 that'll be turned back in, do you know what they end up doing with those?
I do not know.
I wondered if they harvested stuff, or if they actually sold them to other countries or something.
Not sure, particularly since it's no longer supported by the company, and parts are hard to come by.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, once again, I just want to bring into play the ordinance, and Tim, if you're going to be talking to Lynn, one of the fixes in this ordinance would possibly be to increase the amount of money that department heads are permitted to spend without council approval. I have a feeling that this ordinance was probably drafted 20 years ago, so the real time of money, I think probably these numbers should go up a little bit. I'm looking at streamlining governmental decisions, and it just seems a waste that the chief had to wait for a meeting to come to, to ask city council to purchase something that is $2,656. And I think we can streamline that, that process a little bit better. Additionally, he does not need, I just want to remind everyone, that in excess of $2,000, he needs to come to council, but it's only when the contract exceeds 5,000 that it's subject to competitive bidding. So even though he doesn't need competitive bidding on this, I just think that it was an absolute waste of time for him to be here, and would advocate that this ordinance be immediately reviewed for modernization.
John, pardon me. I would state that's similar to those lines. I think that these, this definitely needs to be raised. We have enough trust in our department heads, especially Chief Collins, that I think you should be able to make this approval by yourself. So if we need to raise it to, my suggestion personally would be city manager up to 10,000, and what is it, competitive bids is, what's it at, 2,000 right now? So maybe 5,000, 10,000 break, something along those lines? Just want to put that on the record, so. But yeah, with that being said, I will make the motion to approve the purchase of One Life Pack 1,000 AED and Battery from Physio Control for $2,656.78.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council.
Consider the resolution to prohibit all truck turns at the intersections of Lake and Lafayette, Tamaa, Pontiac Trail, to submit to the RRC.
Bob, long time.
It's finally here. Well, I think with a lot of credit should go to Police Chief Collins, because we both worked on this. And you have before you an agenda note, and basically, this follows back from August of last year, where you had a brief discussion. The mayor brought it up, and then council suggested that we do utilize Transportation Improvement Association. So Lloyd and I met with them, and it took a little longer than we ever planned, with some miscommunication on their part, but we finally got it done. And so you have in your packet the July 7th, really final email from Chuck Keller, but you also had a copy of the May 15th report from TIA. So all truck turns would be eliminated, and they would be rerouted basically down to Reynolds Suite on a loopback system, or the trucks going to MST would take McCady. Where all the signage would be diverting all of the traffic to those areas. There's a list of all the signs in the packet.
Yeah, I was wondering, in that sign list, when it had referenced McCady, if the intention had been to try to divert other traffic, other than the stuff going to MST through there? So that just struck me as funny.
No, and the trucking companies, well, Lloyd probably knows this from other instances, but the trucking companies will be notified by RCOC. And then, of course, the enforcement has to take place.
Right. Yeah, this is terrific.
So there is, there is a proposed resolution attached, and the city attorney looked at the first draft, and we tweaked it, and so, are there any other questions?
I'll make the motion that we...
Maggie?
Oh, sorry.
Where's money coming from to pay the 6,000? Is it signage?
Signage.
Signage?
Yep.
Every year, every year, I budget money in both local and major streets for different types of signage, so I'm sure it'll be funded out of that, Meg.
There was discussion, it was noted, I never heard a final resolution of how, but I heard that Lynn mentioned the signage there.
It never was part of that conversation.
Yeah, I wasn't either. She just mentioned that the past.
Hey, Bob, I got it, don't worry.
So to that point, though, is there a line item for where it would come out of, where we know?
I have no idea. I think that's what Bob was referring to.
We have signed under both local and major streets, Joe, that we fund every year, okay?
Okay.
And I don't know if it specifically says signs, but I can get the exact language, and we, we buy lots of reflective signs throughout the city out of those line items every single year.
And it's been referenced numerous times on this board, that the department has to balance out, not every line item within the department, so...
Yeah, and certainly, I mean, if, one of the things I wish that, that's actually very beneficial in here, is that, where's the picture? Kind of, I don't know if anybody would be able to see this, but there's a picture of a truck. Kind of, I don't know if anybody would be able to see this, but there's a picture of a truck literally hitting, hitting the curb and hitting the pole. So, I mean, this is very much needed, something I will support, of course. I just, I think going forward, we need to have some of those details where the finances are coming from, where they're coming from exactly. Because I want to make sure if we're pulling from signs, the sign budget, that we're not maybe jeopardizing other signs that could be repaired because this was not a budgeted item. So, and we've been talking about it for about a year, I know. So, certainly, it's hard to put it on the budget when we don't know what the numbers are. But I just wanted to make sure that we're doing that due diligence financially. So, but again, I'm going to support this and I think this is good. Lot of hard work. Bob, Chief Collins, I like how you're very quick to give the credit, so thank you both.
Thank you.
John? Yeah, my issue has always been when people come to ask for money is, just as a reminder, is just to put a little sentence in here whether or not the item has been budgeted for because I carry the budget with me and/or tell me where you think the money's going to come from. I'm just, I've been on the budget for about a year now. So, I'm just a numbers person, so I'm going to be watching where that money is coming from.
I appreciate that. I submitted this to Lynn and I didn't hear back. I appreciate that.
Well, sometimes it's, you know, it's easy to miss, but I think it's just a culture change of now starting to pay attention to where in the budget the money is coming from and taking a look at these line items. And I think it's a good positive change because I think it makes us sensitive to what we're doing with the taxpayer dollars. I mean, they're the ones that pay everybody's salary, so.
Excuse me, the timetable says two to three months estimated for, so before Christmas.
Well, once they receive the resolution, then they put the order in to manufacture the signs. And so, Chuck told us two to three months to have them up.
All right, I'll make the motion then that we approve the resolution as presented to eliminate all truck turns at Lake and Lafayette Streets.
Second.
I think I beat you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good work, guys. Thank you.
Very good work.
For all the future mayors out there and council people, this is something that the business owners downtown were adamant about trying to get changed. And the people that live downtown know about it. We've seen it, I don't know how many, how many times has that pole been hit on the corner, Bob?
Too many posts. We've replaced the base of the clock dozens of times.
You say nothing of the parades that form when they're trying to make that turn, cycle after cycle.
In the past, comments were made that, you know, I'm not saying who or what, but nothing could be done. It's Oakland County and I don't buy that. So, we got the guy here from Oakland County, basically. And that's one of the first things I said to Bob when he got here. I said, like, we need to try to do this and make this happen because it's a safety issue. You know, and people are always saying it's not safe downtown, which is not true. But when those trucks come through, it does make it a little dicey. So, this is something that's going to be a big plus, I think, for the downtown. It's going to help. Truck drivers don't want to make that turn either. And if they, they come down there and they find out they got to make that turn, they're like, oh, man. You know, so it'll take a few times and they'll go find another way. So, thank you, Bob, very much.
Maybe the county will pay for those signs if that's county streets, you know?
We tried that.
They tried beating them up.
That ain't happening.
John, I got a discussion just about the enforcement, chief, and how are we going to tackle that?
Red and blue lights mostly. We will handle it. We may give a few warnings initially when the signs go first up in the interest of education and fairness. But eventually, for slow learners, they'll probably be very expensive tickets. And truck drivers do not like to get tickets against their CDL.
Yep.
Be a quick learning curve, yeah.
Thank you, Bob, for your hard work on this.
You're welcome.
Lloyd?
Yep.
Definitely.
Mostly Bob.
You guys saw firsthand that one day, I guess, when you were in there with the TDA.
That was a coincidence. We were meeting with the representative from Traffic Improvement Association. And that's the day the truck was clipping that sign.
There was still some initial resistance, though, do you remember? They were saying that, you know, the corner on 10 Mile didn't comply and, you know, we're taking, you got four corners that don't comply in downtown.
Well, if you had to design the intersections, the northeast corner of Reynolds Suite in South Lafayette doesn't meet a design standard.
Oh, that's the one, yeah.
But it's far superior to what exists at the four corners. So, we had them on that one.
Okay, thank you again. Did we do it? Did we? Bob, again, consider relocation expansion, that's your amendment?
This is an item that came up, actually, I heard of it, the first time I heard of, by a veteran from the VFW, expressed to me July of 2016 that they had some thoughts, they didn't know how to approach it. They weren't pleased with ceremonies, the town had grown, the noise of the trucks and people standing out in the road. I knew Harvey was a veteran, Councilman Waddell rather, excuse me. And so, I approached Harvey and I didn't know the difference at that point between American Legion and VFW. Or who had owned the monument or who was in charge of the monument. So, Harvey pointed me to the VFW. I started talking to the VFW. And then, we had some design assistance by Don Beagle, who worked on the Shimatero monument out at the South Line High School. I sought out Don because I read in the paper about that monument with South Line High School. So, Don donated all of his services and came up with all the concepts and things in the package. Don and I went to the veterans, to an executive board meeting. Went to a membership meeting and then we gave them all the information. We always thought it was important, and I know other people were asking questions, I heard through the grapevine. And I said, well, we thought it was important that we start with the veterans. And that we had to go to all of the groups to weigh in on it. So, then we went to Parks and Rec. They unanimously approved it after the veterans. We went to the planning commission and then the last group was the historical commission. And now, the veterans, if it were to be approved tonight, will raise funds. Optimistically, they'd like to dedicate it next Memorial Day. But in reality, $30,000 might take a year or two. So, I put together a kind of a background. In no way, I wanted anybody to feel that this was overly accommodating a development in the new master plan. I noted in there that after we started down the road with the VFW, I approached the DDA board chair, who I knew had some plans. And I noted in there, and Gene said and repeated to this day, that he would work around it. So, he did not put me up to this or even suggest that I do this. He was embarrassed by it. But it was great conversation. And I myself am a veteran and I put in the background, and I just thought that with all of the great publicity the War Dog Memorial's getting, which I go by, I thought that the human beings of this community needed something as nice to be proud of. So, that was my motivation.
I think, Bob, somewhere back in those files, a long time ago, John Doyle was mayor. I suggested something to John and some people about my possibly doing that then, just because I felt the same thing. I felt the parking lot wasn't a, I'm not a veteran, but, you know, my dad was in Korea and, you know, Rod Cook, veteran, you were a veteran. I felt as though that, my reasoning behind what I was doing, I drew something up and I gave it to him. And I was like, it'd be nice to have another place. And I did it the wrong way. I didn't follow the right channels and the right people. And I think I rubbed people the wrong way. So, it was nice to see it be done the right way this time. And it's for the same reasons, because it's definitely, needs a better place to honor the people that have come for us to make this country who we are. I hate to sound political, but we wouldn't be here without them, so.
John? I just want to say, I think this is wonderful. Thank you very much. I do also want to maybe say clear the air or set the record straight. I mean, there's some other things I'm going to be saying tonight that kind of, I think there's some misinformation that's going around, especially this time of year. And one of the things that came out initially was, I'm not going to say who, but somebody created a, started to create a panic that the memorial's going to be moved, the rock's going to be moved, but didn't back it up with the facts of what's actually happening. And that it's actually going to be replaced by a bigger, better, more appropriate memorial. So, I wish that whoever started that rumor would have kind of had their facts straight. And now, knowing that the veterans are on board, Parks and Rec are on board, it just really shows that this is such a wonderful project. And, you know, I don't, I wasn't going to say this, but I guess I will. I wanted to also say it's very fitting for, Harvey, you're not going to inspect this, but Councilmember Waddell, that you're voting on this important piece when you serve. So, thank you for your service and I think this is a great tribute. And, yeah, it's just really nice to have veterans on our council and supporting this and even voting on this, which obviously is not a conflict. So, thank you for that.
So, that everyone knows in the public here tonight or anyone watching the tape, the actual monument that exists at the corner of Liberty will be moved.
That's right.
And all of the bricks will be moved. It'll be repositioned.
That's right.
So, that will be there. And that'll be the centerpiece of a much larger overall project.
You know, I think their fundraising efforts are going to be a lot easier to accomplish once this is an approved plan. So, you know, people will be able to donate knowing that it's going to happen, so.
Meg?
Yes, I'd also like to add a couple of comments on this. I too have had an opportunity to be at the memorial in years past when there's been a ceremony there and cars have been going by. And I've been at other memorials for veterans where they've been held in very nice places, a place of respect. And I always felt that that corner was not respectful to the lives and the commitment that these men and women have made for all of us. And if you don't believe in the worth of a veteran, then sit down with him or her and talk to them about freedom of speech and your First Amendment right. And they will be the first individuals to say that I fought for freedom of speech. I fought for your right to associate freely, to gather in the public square and to raise your voice, but not to raise your violence. And I think that this is a community that clearly, clearly has a lot of veterans. I'm strongly in support of this. I support the veterans in my private practice. And I can't think of any other thing that we can do to thank those individuals that have given so much of their lives, particularly when you see what happened this past week down in Charlotte. Is freedom of speech is about saying what you want to say. I don't like what everybody says, but I respect their right to be able to say whatever they want in this country without violence. And this memorial is going to mean a lot to the gentlemen in this community and the women who have given their lives. And I want everyone to remember what they gave their lives for. So, for those generations that haven't gone to war, spend some time with a vet, learn your history. This is a very important project for the city to take on.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that the existing memorial was blessed by the honor that the people that were actually having celebrations or memorials there. But it'll be nice to be able to provide them with a much better aesthetic and just enhance the whole package and give them enough space so that they can grow their group too.
Okay. I, oh. Oh, yeah, I was going to make the motion, but I saw there's some other comments, so please feel free.
Well, the other point that I was going to make about this is that you have families that visit these memorials. And you have families that will come and spend some silent time and will sit there. And they will either bring a card or prayer or something or a letter that they have received. I was recently at a memorial, Veterans Memorial, where the family brought up and wanted some private time. And you don't get that on this corner here. And we seem to forget the families that are affected by these brave men and women that go into war. So, I think it's not only beneficial to them, but I think it's beneficial to the whole circle. And I think it's just a good thing to have in this community. Wish we had done this sooner.
I just, I need to disclose that before we vote that I'm the commander of the American Legion post here in town. And we do a lot of things cooperatively with the VFW, but I don't have any stake in it to where it would preclude me from voting on this. Thank you.
Yeah, as I alluded to, I wouldn't see any conflict in that, absolutely none. So, with that said, I will make the motion to approve the relocation and expansion of the Veterans Memorial at the Historic Village adjacent to and incorporating the Blue Star Memorial facing South Lafayette Street as unanimously approved by the VFW Board and Membership, Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, and Historical Commission, and is designated proposed site, says PAN Plan dated May 10, 2017. And I would also add that this is with very much thanks. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Good job.
Thank you, Bob.
All right. Budget.
You looked at me.
Why, you're just prepared.
Yes, let me find my notes real quick. I did have several items on the budget. I have more than several, but I have several. Bob, I'm going to start with you. With respect to your salary, is your salary paid out of the enterprise funds?
Yes.
Okay. Is, is, is it, but you also work for DPW. Just, do you divide it up?
No.
So, completely and totally?
Yes.
Out of the enterprise funds, okay. I just wanted to check on that. I also want to bring to council's attention that the revenue statement that we brought up at the last meeting, in which Harvey and I had a little bit of a disagreement as to what the numbers meant. Lori Mosher was watching that meeting. And Lori is probably the finest accountant or bookkeeper that a municipality could have because she watches these meetings for the financial information. And she picked up on something that I said. It was about the revenue that was coming in from the state, share revenue portion that appeared to be a little high. And I want to let council know that Lori picked up on that. And there is an adjustment that is going to be made with respect to that number. She has been in contact with Plant Moran. So, that number will come down a little bit for the June revenues. It has to do with accrual of that particular payment. So, I just want to make sure council is informed of that. Additionally, I have been in contact with Plant Moran regarding the budget. I've been asking questions. I don't think that surprises anybody. And the question that I had was, I would like to see in the audit a breakout of the Sewer and Water Department. Right now, the auditors are reporting that as a consolidated statement. And I would like to see that broken out as to the Water Department and Sewer Department. And there's a very specific reason for that. That's because the Sewer and Water Department had, for years or whatever, had been operating at a loss. And it was difficult to determine where the loss was coming from. Was it coming from the Water Department or the Sewer Department? Well, if you're working with a consolidated balance sheet, it's tough to know because everything sort of merges together. But if you can break it out into Sewer and Water, you can tell exactly where that issue is coming from and then you can adjust your rates accordingly. So, why raise your water rates if the problem is happening in the Sewer Department? So, I didn't want to, I told Plant Moran that I did not have authority to ask them to do that, that I would probably bring that to council, let council discuss it. And depending on what council decides tonight, then I'll get back with Plant Moran in the morning. Next, I spoke with Plant Moran about borrowing from the unrestricted fund. That is a possibility. I'd like to know what all my financial options are, considering we have some very serious issues that we need to deal with financially with the city in the next year. And so, I want to know what my options are for borrowing. I want to know, you know, do you go into the equities market? Do you issue bonds? Can we borrow internally? And yes, we can. We can borrow from the unrestricted fund, but it has to be an arms-length transaction, meaning that it has to have terms, conditions. The interest rate has to be the current interest rate. And I believe there are other cities that are presently borrowing against those unrestricted funds. So, I want to let council know about that. Also, there was a comment made in the minutes from the last meeting, I think it was by Kivell, stating that he thought that the unrestricted or the restricted funds. Kivell, stating that he thought that the unrestricted or the restricted funds, I think you said that it came from the state. And that kind of jogged me a little bit because I thought, well, wait a minute, the state doesn't control the utility rates because we're a private utility. Am I correct, Bob? I mean, we're a private utility, right?
Right.
Right. So, why would the state be involved in determining what our proportion of money is with respect to designated and undesigned funds with respect to the enterprise fund? Plant Moran, when I was speaking to them about this, they said, no, it's not controlled by the state. Plant Moran thought that City Council, several years ago, entered a resolution where they agreed that revenue from the water taps would be divided. So, much would go into unrestricted and so much would go into restricted. Do you recall that resolution at all?
Oh.
That was 25 years ago.
Well, that's a problem because that's showing how outdated the city is with its finances. That's something that definitely needs to be taken care of, is there needs to be a new resolution adopted by the city as to how the restricted and unrestricted portions are going to be. A very troubling conversation I had with Plant Moran was also, I wanted to bring it to council's attention, is when we were going through the budget cycle, on the budget cycle, I received a general ledger statement showing general revenues falling about, you know, the ending fund balance of about 1.4 million. I think at one point during our budget review, it was up to 1.6 million. When I spoke with Plant Moran last week, it, this is only approximate, so it's not a firm number, but their rough estimate is that the fund balance may be closer to 2.5 or 2.6 million dollars. So, I am now saying to myself, how could the numbers have been off by over a million dollars? If the fund balance on June 30th is now going to be roughly 2.5 million dollars, then how could I be getting these revenue sheets showing the fund balance in May of 1.2 million dollars or 1.4 million dollars? That is a huge swing, which makes me question the numbers in the budget. I don't know. Plant Moran's going to take a look at that, and I think it brought some concern to them also. I did send that to them to review. So, I just want to let council know what I've been doing on the budget. I'd like to first address the issue. What does council feel about Plant Moran separating out Water Sewer Department revenues and expenditures?
I have two issues. Issue number one is if those are conversations Lynn should be bringing to us. I don't know if I'm necessarily comfortable with you having all these conversations with Plant Moran and relating to us your conversations and your understanding of the conversations. Plant Moran should be bringing it to the entire council. I understand your concerns, but I think those concerns should be addressed to Lynn. Lynn should bring those to Plant Moran. And if there's concern that Lynn has and Plant Moran has, I think that's a presentation that should be presented to the entire council.
Well, I disagree, but that's my due diligence. But that's okay, Mike. That's okay.
Well, once again, you're acting on behalf of you.
Mike, stop it.
Whereas we have. Excuse me?
Mike, please.
Now, quit interrupting him.
I'm just saying my opinions as to what your conversations are.
I'm being honest.
You're acting as a lone wolf.
All right, guys. Bring it back.
Anyways, I would like that to be brought to the city manager's attention. And if Plant Moran feels that there's an issue, then Plant Moran could come in front of us and explain it to us all, rather than these private conversations you're having with Plant Moran. Two, we all had concerns with the budget. The whole process was, it's a major revamp. So, again, those are discussions we should be having with the city manager regarding the budget, the differences in the fund balances. Those are questions we should be having with Lynn. Lynn's not here. Hopefully, she'll watch this tape, and maybe she can address those questions at our next city council meeting. That's all I have to say.
Harvey?
Oh, okay. Thank you. I just want to point out that Ms. Kurtz will misidentified where we had a disagreement at our last meeting. And if you look at page two of our minutes, our disagreement was over property tax, not revenue sharing. I want to correct that.
That would be a correct statement. It was about revenue.
Revenue sharing and property tax, right?
Yeah, it was about the revenue coming from the property tax. That is correct.
I just wanted to say that I certainly don't have any qualms with Maggie talking to our experts. The idea of bringing proposals, especially things that aren't agenda items, up for discussion to make a decision is inappropriate. But I applaud any kind of information that we can get insight, then we can end up validating or finding out that it's erroneous down the road. I wish that the city manager were the ones that was reaching out to talk to Plant Moran to actually get better insight. And I have fair confidence that we're going to find out not only our fund balance is enriched higher than what we had been told, I have a feeling that we are probably in a better financial position than what it was suggested to be when we had approved the last budget. So, I'm looking forward to that, to the answer to that. And I feel pretty strong that it's likely to end up being that we weren't really as broken as what was suggested, so.
Yeah, I have two points, two points, quick points. I'm not as optimistic about the budget. I'm, I have a feeling once Plant Moran comes in, those numbers are going to be pretty shocking for all of us. And unfortunately, I'm actually, fortunately, we're having these discussions now about the budget so we can hopefully avoid a tax increase next year. So, I'm not as optimistic, but I am glad that these discussions are going on. Next, I'd like to mention that we have third-party vendors. We have a planner, city planner, city attorney, SafeBuild, who does our inspections. And as council members, it's not inappropriate to have contact with these vendors. I mean, we have the minutes, the bills right in front of us, and there's, all the time, there's records of council members contacting our city attorney. In fact, there's one from Councilmember Kivell contacting our city attorney. So, it's not uncommon to have these discussions. Personally, I like to do my business here at the table. That's my personal opinion. But if people decide to make phone calls and do some investigation, I think they should be applauded for their work, so, and their efforts to bring things to the council. That's my only comment on that.
The only point I was trying to make is if we're being asked for our opinion about what Plant Moran should be doing in the future, I would prefer that came from Plant Moran so Plant Moran can explain to us as a whole, as opposed to.
I understood your point.
Yeah, that's the point I was trying to make.
Well, I'm going to continue to talk to Plant Moran. I'm going to continue to talk to any CPA or any person that I can to learn to understand the budget. It was a fiasco this spring, and a lot of this is, you know, learning on the job. There's not a booklet on how this is to be handled, and I have been going to specialists in municipal finance for assistance. And I will continue to do that, whether it's Plant Moran or anybody else. And I will bring that information back to council so that we all have the same information so that we can all move forward together. And you're free to check my facts or whatever. So, I think what I'm doing is good.
I had extensive conversation with them on, basically, what we've all said is the information was interesting getting to us, to say the least, and it made it very difficult for any of us to make a very good decision based on the numbers that kept changing, even during the meetings.
That was a circus.
So, my conversation with Plant Moran was, my biggest concern was, and I said I wasn't speaking for council, but I think we all kind of run the same page on this, is that we need a better way that information to get to this table prior, there was just too many questions prior to us having to make the decision to pass the budget. So, hopefully, they can make some very good, very valid recommendations that will alleviate that situation in the future, so.
I have another thing. I'm staying on top of information regarding balancing budgets, and I just want to let council know that East Lansing City Council is proposing an income tax proposal to be placed on their ballot on November 7th, taxing businesses in their downtown area. I do personally do not advise it. I could not support anything like this. But the city council discussion of the income tax was not transparent enough, which is the complaint that the residents of East Lansing are now raising, is that discussion, financial discussions were not kept out in the open, and the East Lansing businesses were left in the dark as to how bad the budget was. City Council is looking to bring this income tax against all businesses to enhance their revenue instead of balancing their budget. So, I thought this was a very good article. If anybody in council wants to read it, you're more than welcome. Besides the income tax, there were other strategies that were discussed by the city, including a public safety millage for fire and police, consolidating services with neighboring communities, and a 5% budget reduction for all city services. So, other cities are dealing with the same issues that we are, and hopefully, we can start strategizing on how we're going to fund our unfunded 5 million pension liability, which is just sitting out there. So, I keep bringing that up. We don't have a plan. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Bob, downtown.
I put a report on everybody in front of you. Just a lot going on, a lot of great things in the summer. I think the building projects are starting to come in for their permits soon. I don't think that the 115, 117 project is going to start. That's our venue in the kitchen, exquisite kitchens. I think that project is scheduled to begin in April, but they're getting, their drawing submitted now for approval in the next few weeks. Richard Rowe with the Lake Street Tavern and Taekwondo Building is now talking to getting the work of contractors, and so he's trying to sew up those details. We're still, he's still hoping to get the job done this fall, those three buildings, so.
Before Pumpkin Fest?
No, no, he would avoid or stop work during, but either side of that. The hotel, they still have hope of getting open for Pumpkin Fest. They would probably have a limited menu. They're still going to roll out the proper training and all of the soft startup and full grand opening probably after Pumpkin Fest. Their goal is to be open and serving beverages at a limited menu. We'll see how that goes.
That railing looks nice up there, too.
A lot of plans actually going on now for Ladies Night Out with the really good collection of businesses we have now in the core, in and around the core area. We're looking for a great Ladies Night Out on November 17th, the date that they've chosen. They have secured the billboard, the southbound, well, it faces north by Pullman Window, so they'll have that out on the billboard. And so, we're excited about those things. Any questions? I would like to add one item, and that is, from the very first day I started here, it wasn't anyone in City Hall, although it was maybe the next day in City Hall. But the very first person that approached me and offered to help me in any way possible was Bob Martin. And in fact, it was Bob that took me out around the city. And.
He pulled my hand, too.
So, the number one Bob will always be the number one Bob. But I want to say that I appreciate Bob's assistance and advice, which has been invaluable. And the one time I didn't follow his advice, I kind of learned a lesson. But that's our thing. So, then, really, it's just been a wonderful, having some, working with someone of his caliber and his staff, really, the DPW, who I interact with most of the time. And occasionally, well, with the hotel, we had water guys out there, but top-notch in every way. So, I want to thank Bob and wish you well. Thank you for everything. That's all I have.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Ron, you want to have something else without time? You start.
No, I don't have any.
Yeah, I'm going to say what's on everybody's mind, and that's, I know there's a lot of excitement about the hotel, so I'm just crossing my fingers, praying that they get opened by Pumpkin Fest. I know they're working hard, and you see them, everybody sees them working hard, and it's, the community's taking note, and it's, we're all rooting for them, so that's it.
So, one thing I can, back to what you're saying, is everybody knows Cory, Bala, and me are friends. We've been friends a long time, go back a long ways. And what I can tell you about that guy is he's probably one of the nicest guys that you'll see in how he handles his business, but he's also tenacious as heck. So, when he's up against it, he'll do what he can to try to get things done. So, when he said he's trying to be open as best as he can for Pumpkin Fest, he's probably going to get close. And stay a close look to it because it's looking really good. You know, it's the sign, the sign that came from Super Fabrication, I believe, the really nice little round sign that's out there. The railing looks amazing. It's concrete and steel now, no bouncing floors like it used to have, which used to scare everybody.
Those were ghosts?
Yeah, well, hopefully, the ghosts will not come back. But with some pretty amazing business owners in this town, and they need to be congratulated for sticking it out and going through the rough times and hopefully through what's going to be good, hopefully, still. Just because we got a change of mayor and some council people doesn't mean things are going to stop. Hopefully, that will just get people to work closer together and make things better for this town, and people pay more attention to what's going on. I think also, too, that, I want to make a couple of statements about the Salvation Army store because I haven't said anything. That thing has become kind of my, I've been told by my kids that I have to stay out of there. So, I go like once a week, and I have my fix, you know? And now, they come home, and they go, what did you buy now? You know? But I also go to the resale shop probably at least twice a week as well. So, if you guys have a god to these places, you need to go because they are gems. And we don't get an opportunity to have places like this with these big box stores at the mall that go on and everything. Nothing against them, but there's some pretty good, there's some pretty good things going on in this town, what these store owners are offering right now. And I think people need to get out and check it out. Go here first and get a burger, get a beer, get a pop, check out a couple of the breweries, go to the new stores. If you're going to have your kitchen remodeled, talk to the new kitchen store, see what they got. These are really good people that are putting their lives on the line, their families on the line for us. And I think we should award them, or at least give them the opportunity to show us what they got. I, for one, hate going to the mall. You know, my daughter's a big shop in the mall world these days, but I think we get a lot more from our downtowns. And I think downtown has been a gem. I said it years ago before I was even running from here. It's a gem. It's a diamond, needs to be polished. I still say that. It's getting closer, but we need the residents' help, and they can't do it all by themselves. We need people to flood their businesses. Tell them what, tell them what you like, tell them what you don't like, and tell them what you want, you know? And they'll probably try to provide it, so that's what I have to say. And Bob, I know you say it's not you, but you've been ace in the hole on this, so thank you.
Could I ask, oh, could I ask one question? Bob, I haven't been able to get down to the farmer's market. I've just been like crazy on weekends, but I've seen an awful lot of foot traffic over there. Do they seem to be doing well?
They're not at maximum capacity yet. I think the week before last, they were one stall short of maximum capacity. And this was with a new direction on 80% food and plant, food, vegetable, fruit, plant. DDA wanted to go with more emphasis on that and less on the artisans. And so, there was some transition with that. Not everyone's happy about that, perhaps, but most of the people are happy and love it.
Well, now, with all the fruit and vegetables coming in, too, it's got, it seems like that would be a perfect idea for them, so.
I think there's nervousness about people here about development downtown, and a lot of the market vendors are worried about where they might be in the future. And there's one location noted in the master plan, and the DDA has been talking about another location. So, at some point, it's a great problem to have that we're going to come up with a permanent home, at least a new home for the farmer's market, well in advance. And so, we're staying ahead of that. But yeah, we're real pleased. The farmer's market manager, Jeff Root, did a wonderful job for us, but he had a full-time job offer. And then, the interim manager, Tim Davids, became the full-time. And then the interim manager, Tim Davids, became the full-time of the board, appointed him as full-time farmer's market manager just this past Thursday.
Well, as I said, I was, I've been leaving pretty early out of town and, but there's already, it seems like an awful lot of people down there, but even if the places, if the intention is to transition to another location, I'd hate to end up seeing a lull in the action over there. Once we end up building some kind of a reputation, it'd be nice to be able to maintain that until the transition takes place.
And we're, I think, you know, developers know we're here, so we're taking calls. And so I, you know, I mean, that block has Norm at one end and, I mean, it's not going to be overnight, but I would say in the, in the three to five year period, realistically, we're going to have to have in advance of that, a new home for the farmer's market.
Yeah.
It's a great problem.
Good thing, one thing I, funny that I noticed this, but it's like the coffee shop and I think Witch's had both, the same day after the farmer's market, we walked into both of them and they had tables lined with flowers that came from the farmer's market. And it was beautiful. I mean, it was like for me to be saying, oh, it was beautiful, you know, it was like, but it really was. It was nice to see because they're, they're working together, you know?
Yeah.
And it was a fresh, it was definitely a fresh look in both places. It definitely jumped out at you.
Spend local.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and, and another thing too is that the downtown is having record attendance at a lot of its events. The Lakin, Lake Street Cruisin is doing extremely well. Arts and Cars was absolutely, absolutely packed. I worked Blues Brews and Brats and that was absolutely packed. In fact, I don't know if people knew this or not, but Jeff down at Three Monk had a band there that was, that packed the house over there, Witch's hat was packed. So the city is absolutely attracting some, is putting on some great events that are being well supported by the surrounding communities. And I've been at about, just about every one of them and, and I'm telling you, they are absolutely packed.
That's great.
So that's a good thing. I just wanted to let you know.
We've got incredible volunteers and other groups doing these events. Great how the community stepped up and the DDA doesn't even have to get into that aspect like in other communities, so great community support.
What are we doing, council comments?
She's not here. Anybody have any comments they want to make?
Let's let them go.
Council comments?
We got all these people here, let's adjourn, let them go.
Well, I got a couple of comments.
Okay.
Let me start?
Yep.
One of the things I just wanted to highlight because I've been asked to by a couple of individuals is we do have differences on this council and they are ideological differences, quite frankly, with respect to fiscal management of taxpayer dollars. And I think if you look at just about any meeting, you will see some dust-ups once in a while and for the most part, they are related to budget issues. That includes whether or not we can ask questions regarding invoices or bills. For example, addressing the operating losses over in the sewer and water department. These are not meant to judge how an individual is running the department because these are responsibilities of council. So these issues have been more about council paying attention to budget issues. You can't rely on your city manager because as I read earlier in the year, the statutory responsibility and obligation belongs to council to appropriate and to levy taxes. We have differences in, in the budgeting process. For example, I did not vote for the budget this year because the, even though it was a proposed budget, the 2018-2019 budget was deficit spending and I believe that is inappropriate to approve any budget that has deficit spending in it. And that was one of the reasons why I did not vote for that particular budget. I think it's also important for the community to understand that, that I am a very conservative fiscal individual and the city received a corrective action letter in September of 2016, putting the city on notice that its expenditures exceeded its revenues for the past three years. So when you get that kind of letter, I think that the battles, if you want to call them battles, that, that I have been fighting up here for whatever reason, was validated through that letter. And eight months after receiving the corrective action letter noting that the city had exceeded revenues of its expenditures by revenues for three years, we had probably, what I found was that the absolute worst budgeting season that frankly I've ever seen in my life. I sat down with CPAs afterwards during the two-month period and hopefully there'll be change next year. Probably the most disheartening piece of financial information, which I believe has not been addressed adequately by council, has been the $5 million unfunded pension liability and the rising legacy costs. We have no plan in place at all to how we are going to fix this unfunded pension liability, which is quite frankly exceeding what our revenues are in the city. You have three options. You either raise taxes, you could do that, or what you could do is quite frankly dissolve the South Line Police Department and hire Oakland County Sheriff and save the city about $1.2 million or wait till the dollar amount gets high enough and just file bankruptcy. You don't have any good options and if this had been dealt with years ago, we may have been in a very different position. So there are very different ideological differences on this council as to the finances of the city and you have to take a look back and look at what had been done so that you can learn from it, move forward and have a plan and a strategy, which East Lansing council seems to have, but not us. So for those individuals who think that there's negativity up here or toxicity up here, I would encourage you to please watch the meetings because probably 90% of it has to do with finance and we have to get the finances in order. You don't have your finances in order, if you don't have fiscal stability or strength, you're not going to have a downtown and I'm not going to give up that downtown. Next, what I would like to do is, I have to come out with this because it's, I've just been asked too much. I was asked in January, I was asked this spring and I was asked again in July, I was asked at Arts and Cars, I was asked at Blues Brews and Brats and I have given the same answer since January of 2017. I am not interested in running for city council as a mayoral candidate. For those of you that received my emails this spring, you know that my position has not changed, but I want to thank each and every one of the individuals who sent me petitions, who put notes on my door, left them for my mayor, pulled me aside at church in Kroger's. But I don't think it's fair to the candidates who are running for mayor to have this hanging out there, is she or isn't she? I think it's fair to let these candidates run their campaigns and get going and I've made a commitment to certain individuals through the 2018 election cycle and I'm not going to back out of those commitments. Next, as to the candidates for mayor, I would like to comment and commend each and every one of you for, for you stepping up and wanting to run for mayor. I think it's very important that we move forward with a new generation of leaders in the city, with individuals who can come forward with commitment, come forward with problem-solving skills. This is not a high-five kind of situation where you come up here and talk about what you did when you were in high school. There are some very serious issues that are facing the city in the next six to eight months and that unfunded pension liability is going to bury the city. So we need to deal with it, you got to make the tough decisions, you have to have the political will and forget about getting reelected. Just make the decisions. The community will stand behind the council, but you have to articulate your reasons why and you have to come forward and explain to the people exactly why you are doing what you are doing. So if you have good communication skills, you will be fine. Next, what I would like to know, like to say is I would like to commend the three women that have stepped forward and will be running for mayor. I think this is pretty important for me. I have spent my whole life working for women predominantly that are running for public office, except for this last presidential candidacy, and I just think that female women moving into politics is very important for the culture change in the city. I can only tell you that as my early years in the city were in politics, have not been a welcoming environment, much like the woman who spoke here tonight and asked for my resignation. She is not unusual, she is part of resistance. She is part of a community that for whatever reason will critique a female candidate much tougher and harder than she will a male candidate. So I respect her opinion to say what she wants to say, but she is also part of the problem as to why women do not advance in the political arena. So for those women that are running, I want to commend you, I support you, I hope you do well, but the bottom line is when you vote, you vote because you're qualified, not because of your gender. I can remember being told many, many years ago that I was not wanted on council because of my gender and there was actually a dust-up with me at the city Christmas party in 2015 at the hotel where a council member came up and gave me his opinion of me being on council. Needless to say, I will not repeat my expletive. So for those of you that are out there, congratulations to all of you. I hope all of you do well, but I also hope that the women that are there also do well and I hope you've got the credentials to sit up here someday as mayor. Thank you.
I think we need to go.
So we can go talk, go honor Bob.
What?
Yeah.
Is there other people?
Yeah, real quick. Oh, I thought we didn't.
No, I know, I know.
It did seem like it went on forever.
Bob, the vote in Lion Township to hire you was 7-0. They knew what they were getting. I hope we know what we're losing. You're the face of South Line and I just wish we could have kept you in this city to finish out your career. It's obvious you wanted to work. It's obvious Lion Township wanted you to work for them and they acknowledged it by voting for you 7-0. Wish you the best. Thank God you're only right next door and believe me, I'll be asking you for that water key.
And we know where you, and we do know where you live.
Yeah. Wish you the best, Bob.
I have a good question for you though, about the music. Are we losing you for that?
Our music program has gotten bigger and more powerful. We're constantly getting larger Friday nights. I wish to see all of you there. We got a great show Friday night, a 50's band called Rich Eddie and we're closing out the season with a dedication to Sergeant Pepper's 50th anniversary on the 25th. Please join us. It's a wonderful night and I stress the friendships that have been made at that gazebo is tremendous and thank you for giving me the opportunity to do that.
Thanks, Bob. Any comments? Please be brief.
So I wanted to also comment about this mayoral race and I also was going to state that I am not going to be running for mayor. In the past, there's been people who have ran in the middle of their term and that's not something I'm interested in. I think if somebody's going to run for mayor, it should be, it should be when the time's right and definitely this is not the right time for me, so I want to put any rumors to rest there. Speaking of the mayor, I, I think there was a little bit of what we, we hear lately is fake news going around and when people say that nobody wants to be mayor, I don't think that's really an accurate statement. Paper takes things and they run with it, but the fact is that I don't think that many people knew that there was a filing deadline and quite frankly, I wish that it would have been announced a couple of weeks before the deadline that who was or who wasn't running for mayor and that may have drawn out some of the candidates. Because obviously with eight candidates stepping forward, people do want to run for mayor. It's that, that simple. So now speaking of which, I did want to say that I find it exciting, all of the candidates who have stepped forward, I do think that the people that impress, I have not met every candidate, but the people who impressed me the most are those who have already filed and came out early because it shows their commitment. I mean, there was people such as Dan, you came out right away. Mr. Powell, you came out right away. Who else do we have? Kennison, Ashley, all four of it. The serious candidates are here and if I missed anybody, I apologize. But, so with that being said, I'm not going to be really endorsing anybody, but I would say that whoever I support, it needs to be somebody new, somebody that can lead the city in a new direction. So, you know, I sat next to Ted for many years and, but I do think that somebody would be, that's here tonight, would make a good candidate. As I mentioned, I did not have a chance to meet all the candidates, but there's a couple that do stand out in my mind, all of them. But I do like the style of Mr. Powell, even though we haven't met personally. You know, I read some of the things you put on, on social media and kind of, I kind of like the people who kind of tell it like it is sometimes. Sometimes that's what you need and, and being respectful though. You have to be respectful, but sometimes you need to tell it like it is when you're dealing with serious budget issues and you're dealing with unfunded pension liabilities and, you know, that's how you, that's how you make change and positive change. So again, with that being said, I wish out all the mayoral candidates, good luck and look forward to working with, sitting next to whoever is elected mayor and has the privilege and honor of leading this, this great city. Next, I did want to talk about Bob and I will say, John told me to make my, my statements brief, so I will. Bob, you were one of the first people that, that offered, that welcomed me to the city. Mr. Martin gave me a tour of the wastewater treatment plant and the, and the water plant and I, I remember that to my day, to this day and I even had, he gave me a souvenir, a hat. So I wear that around town and I wear it with honor, so thank you. And everything you've given to the city, it's just, it's, it's, you know, it's very much appreciated, very much. And I'll say Lion Township, they're getting a very good employee. You know, I think you're, you're going to come out of this really well and this year and a good opportunity to help them fix their, their water problems. I mean, it's no secret, it's not a slam in Lion Township, but they have brown water and they're investing in a new $17 million. They've, their board has authorized a new wastewater treatment plant and exploration, so you have your challenges and you can make a name for yourself there and I'm sure you're going to do great for our, for our good friends over in Lion Township. So I want to congratulate you. Mr. Lair, thank you for, where's Ryan at? Thank you for getting a cake for Bob. I think that's wonderful. Be nice to wish him his farewells, but we know, we know where you live. Thank you, Bob. Next, wanted to come back to something that was in the minutes and that was actually regarding, there was an exchange between myself and, and council member Kittle about the increase in taxes. Mr. Kittle polled my tax returns, which is public information, I have no problem with that. That's, that's, I mean, I don't go around saying how much I pay in taxes like most people, but he polled them and then the statement was that between last year's tax bill and this year's, it was only an increase of $29. I think that was corrected to $30. But what was not mentioned was that the reason why it was so low was because the overall millage was negated by the school bond, the school debt, which reduced from 9.6 mils down to 9.0 mils. So what happened was, city council, just to give a quick history, we started with our budget discussions, the talk was two mils tax increase. We got it down to, I think it was 1.4 and then we had a final meeting, various meetings, we had a final meeting and the ultimate number that we raised it was .6838 mils, so essentially seven mils. So what happened was, we raised it and it was the largest tax increase in the, in the history of the, in the past decade or two, nearly two decades, but since the school raised, lowered their debt, overall what we're paying was, was basically a wash. So the only reason why you're not seeing a larger tax increase is because the school did their part and they were able to lower their, their debt millage. So I just wanted to make that clear because I think it was a little misleading to come out and saying it wasn't that much money when, you know, anybody can manipulate numbers, just how you, how you present them. But the facts speak for themselves. Now I also did want to wish Now, I also did want to wish all of the Panthers coaches and the children and the players and the unit directors and everybody involved in the Panther organization a wonderful season. And that's starting, actually started today. And Mr. Kramer, council member Kramer, thank you for your service. I know, you know, you and I, we may not have agreed on everything. But I do agree that you did a tremendous job, and I know it takes a lot of commitment. I'm saying that from the bottom of my heart. So thank you. Thank you for your service of what you've done in the, with the Panthers. Next, I would also like to say that the Blues Brews and Brats was a nice activity, very nice. Congratulations to the chamber. Whenever we can bring these activities downtown, I think that's, and the chamber can showcase our city. And now that the chamber's out of the city of South Lion, I think it's great that they're bringing, still keeping us, keeping us in mind and having activities in our city. So I think that's great. And then lastly, I do wanna thank Chief Kennedy. And actually give a little credit to Kennison, one of the mayoral candidates, I think you know what I'm gonna say, regarding the spray park that actually the fire department put on two of them. You put on one for the general public, and then you put on another one for the children of, at the little kids' club. So in Whipple Street. And the reason why I mentioned Kennison is because she approached Chief Kennedy a couple of years ago and kinda started that. And so, you know, that's really appreciated. And it's those little things that are, that all of our residents love. And I know the kids had a great time and it's, thank you. Thank you both for leading that. So with that, I wanna say thank you. Exciting times ahead for our city. Thank you for listening to me tonight and have a good night. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that Blues Brews and Brats was a real nice time. We had a perfect weather, everybody performed well, the beer flowed nicely, they had good food there. Even the little trinkets, there was little bottle caps that were bottle openers and things, all that stuff. And a ridiculously expensive, very nice-looking F-150 was there from Varsity Ford. It was like 62K sticker or something, but, so that was really nice. And I agree that Andrea, when they ended up moving out of town, she assured me that their intention was to make sure that we still were very forefront in, in all of their plans and things. They weren't abandoning us, so I appreciate her staying true to that. And Bob, I'm, I'm heartbroken that you've made the decision you've made. I feel terrible that, that you had to end up making that, and I certainly understand it. I watched the meeting where you accepted the, the offer. And the collegiality and, and just positive spirit in that room was palpable. So I'm hoping that that's the way that they act all the time. And I think that you'll end up being a great fit in there and a huge asset. Don't be a stranger. I mean, we still love ya, even if you've run away from us. So, you know, we'll bump into you in, in plenty of activities that are going on in town. So thank you very much for everything that you've done. I've known you a heck of a long time. And you've always been one of the most stand-up genuine people I've ever met. And I can't thank you enough for everything you've done for this community. That's all I have. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Oh, you're, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, don't.
You're up.
No, no, I'm done.
You were saying earlier that.
I was, I was gonna make a comment.
I didn't, I'm, I'm thinking of Bob, I apologize.
Thank you, Bob. That's all.
I guess one thing, since you asked me, I should say this. Bob, I've known you for a while. I knew Lyndon. I've known you a long time, got to know you really well. I don't even know how to describe you to some people, you know? I mean, you're, you're like a throwback to what honor and work and ethic is all about. Without getting mushy about it, I'm going to. But I mean, it's hard to see people these days that work like this guy does. He will take no credit for what his guys do. He'll be the first one to, you know, push the mic away and say, "Wait, guys, you know, it's my guys", you know, and he needs that 110%. It isn't all, it's not fake at all. And you alluded to it, you know, I mean, everybody that's been here long enough know what you're about. Lion Township is getting the best and we're losing the best. But you're still a friend and I got your back.
Thank you.
Take care of this guy, Lion Township.
They will.
You made the motion.
Yeah.